Good afternoon. It is 2:04 PM on Wednesday, July 15th. Call this meeting to order. This is a workshop to discuss, well, it's a workshop, so we're calling to order. Do I have any amendments to the agenda?
None here, Mr. Chair.
With none, do I have a motion, please?
I move we approve the agenda as written.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
For the discussion, roll, please.
Mr. Gold?
Aye.
Vice Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Chair Pash?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
All right, we're moving on to number three projects, NeoGov Demonstration. Ms. Schmelzer.
Yes, so about two weeks ago, I think it was, the board had asked for a demonstration on NeoGov. NeoGov is a software package that we had learned a little bit about last year, and it was not budgeted, so we did not proceed with it last year. We did budget for it this year, or budgeted for part of it, we'll see what it costs this year. But the board did decide they wanted more information. Also, staff was not familiar with the program and what it could do, so we wanted staff to see the presentation as well. So, Ron, I'm going to turn it over to you, but just to let you know, so we have the three county commissioners here, we have our attorney, we have our administrative assistant, we have the three people from the finance department, and then we have a member of the public here. So with that, we are going to just fix one little thing, and then you can start. There you go.
Okay, perfect.
All righty.
It's a pleasure to meet everyone, virtually, obviously, social distancing, obviously.
Right. So we're ready-
Is my audio coming through clearly?
Right now, all we see is the blue NeoGov logo, or blue dot that says NeoGov.
Okay, perfect. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So, yeah, just as Ms. Schmelzer had mentioned, I call her Julie, as I'm sure most of you guys do. We will be talking a little bit about NeoGov, some of the capabilities that the software platform can help in order to modernize and digitize a lot of the HR processes for the county. And also, I'm interested to learn a little bit about the OpenGov project that the county recently signed on with a few months ago. Obviously, we'll want to talk about how those two systems would potentially work together or communicate the information back and forth. With me today, I also have Mitch Boland. He will be the one that will assist me in taking us through some of the HR and management side of the systems, and then I'll take the rest of us through the developmental and recruitment sides of the platform. So, any questions before we begin? Do you guys have things in mind that you want us to speak to?
Not at this time, sir.
Perfect, okay. So, with regards to NeoGov, is anyone familiar with us from prior experience? Have you heard potentially of the job board, governmentjobs.com, it's pretty popular in the state?
We have, we do have people that have heard of it, yes.
Okay, perfect. So, we've been around for 20 years. The key differentiator with NeoGov as opposed to other software vendors is all of our systems were built with public sector in mind. We only work with cities, counties, special districts. We don't have any private sector customers. In addition, all of our systems are designed with product managers that have public sector experience. So, they have worked at cities and counties on the HR and finance level when it comes to influencing the design and the functionality of the systems. It's broken down to three key areas: managing that employee data, development of those employees, and recruitment. And so, within management, we have things like Core HR, which houses the employee database. So, who are your employees, when did they start, what positions do they occupy? Right, what was their effective date, have there been changes to their roles in the day period? Payroll, pretty straightforward. Time and attendance, just tracking of leave accrual, clocking in and clocking out, right? Proper calculation of pay, things like that. Benefits, also pretty straightforward. E-forms is going to be the ability to transition out of, you know, more of a filing cabinet, in terms of document management, towards a digital version of those forms and that document, and for employee forms. With regards to development, that spans things like performance evaluations, being able to track and create learning plans and agendas, actually complete those trainings, whether it be online or in person in a classroom, and tracking of certifications and licenses and the learning management portion. And then recruit just deals with any open vacancies at the counties, being able to advertise those positions, collect applications electronically, sort through them, make a hire, and then also complete that orientation and onboard process by completing things like W-4s, I-9s, all electronically and remotely, and allowing for there to be ease of communication between departments. Any questions there?
No.
None.
Okay, so, we're going to start off with the manage side and talk a little bit about what it would look like. We'd also love to get a little bit more of your perspective in terms of how some of these processes are currently conducted and handled. And then feel free to ask questions along the way. Like I mentioned, Mitch will take us through some of these portions. We'd love to hear a little bit more about your OpenGov experience and how you're planning to use that part of the system. And then we can talk to some of those points as well. I'm going to hand over the presenter role to Mitch right now. Mitch, can you hear us?
Yep, yep, I can hear you well.
Perfect.
Thanks, Ron. I just shared my screen, and everybody should be seeing that come through in just a second. You should be seeing Mark Roberts. Let me know when you guys can see that on your end.
We can see it.
We have a profile screen up there, yes.
Okay.
Hard to read, though.
All right, so, again, appreciate everybody jumping on with us. My name's Mitch Boland, I'm one of our solutions engineers here at NeoGov. I just work really closely with the products and help with some of these demonstrations and conversations. So, like Ron said, if you have any questions that go through this, please feel free to stop me, interrupt me, and ask, happy to talk about it. And I'll also throw some softball questions to your guys. It's going to just help understand a little bit more about your process as we go through it. So... Are you all right on your guys' end, if you can go on?
Yeah, we're just trying to make the screen full screen.
Okay.
Better.
We're good.
Okay, okay, all right, perfect. So, like Ron just explained, you know, the big thing to understand about NeoGov is obviously first and foremost, we focus on the public sector only. Those are the only customers that we engage with. A lot of times, you know, processes can get a little bit more unique and complex, especially with the introduction of things like unions and whatnot. So, that's just a lot of what the system's built on, is with the public sector focused in mind. The other thing is that it's a platform, right? So, when you think about NeoGov, it's not that you have to have all of these, right? That's the ideal state, but you can definitely have, you know, bits and pieces of it. But one of the main takeaways that I want you to have is that later on, Ron will show you the recruit side of the system. So, think about it from a hiring perspective, app tracking, onboarding, and just think of it as all one platform, right? Where when you hire people, those employee records will be automatically moved into these other modules for you, right? So, that's obviously what we all want. We don't want to have any sort of tricky integrations, we don't want to be doing manual entry. So, when you hire people in the inside side of the system, they will be automatically pushed over to the other modules for you. Okay? And now, what we're looking at is the employee self-service side of the HRIS system. So, all of your employees are going to have access to an experience like this. Pretty straightforward, self-service, very intuitive, easy to use. But really, just making sure that employees can do some of these actions themselves without always having to go to HR, or their manager, or payroll, whoever it might be, to kick something off or look up some of their information. So, first quick question. Currently at the county, do you guys have any form of self-service that employees can log into? Or not quite, maybe just for a few activities, what does it look like today?
Mark, we do not have any right now.
Okay, perfect, easy enough. And that's all, that's, you know, that's the same boat as a lot of customers that we talk to. So, as we look at this, again, from the employee's perspective, it's all very straightforward. So, Mark has his own information that he can look into. But one of the first things that we kind of put right in front of their face is going to be their available time off, right? So, we know that employees really care about my vacation time, my sick time, what are my accrual balances, everything like that. So, that's going to be one of the first grids that we show them, just so they're always very clear on how much time they have available. And as I scroll down, there's a messages area that you can push out updates. But what we really want to focus a little bit of time on is going to be this area of quick links, because this is, you know, think of it as the easy buttons where employees can kick off some of these different activities whenever they need to. And I won't go through all of them, but I'm going to hit on the key ones that really matter most to our HRIS customers. So, the first one, to just give you a very simple example of what it looks like for an employee to come in and make some updates. Again, if you want them to have that access, always remember that. You're in full control of, you know, what they can see, what they can do. Is it read-only access? Do you want to let them update some of these things? And the other thing that goes along with that is, obviously, we will be moving to a more automated environment like this, where you're allowing employees to do more on their own. You're probably going to want approval processes to back a lot of this up, right? So, as I go through here, know that yes, employees can be given a little bit of the freedom to initiate the change, but it can certainly go through an approval process to whoever needs to go to before that's basically finalized within the system. Right? So, the first area I'm going to point out is the by-profile area for Mark. So, again, if you wanted to give your employees an easy way to get in, to get in, check out some of their own information, maybe they can update to their address or their contact information because there's been a change there, this is how they can do that, right? So, all of this, I like to tell people that, you know, this is all field-level security, which basically means, you know, this can all be shut down. So, again, it's read-only, or you can open some of it up, like I have, where they can go in and start making the changes themselves. So, if I knew that I was going to be moving in a month, maybe I'd want to go in and put that change, so I'm just being a little bit proactive about it. So, I can just update whatever data I need to, okay? And before I save it, I'm going to draw your attention to this right at the top of the screen. And if you can't see it very well, I apologize, but it's simply our, it's simply the effective dating that's available both in the system. So, across the HRIS modules, effective dating is a very popular and important concept to say that, well, if I change my address and I save that, let's run it through an approval process and everything, but make sure that that history is going to be captured. Okay, so you're never losing that history of where someone lived, or whatever the case might be. That's what the effective dating's doing for you. And as I go to save this as the employee, this is where I can choose that effective date. So, I can either, you know, drive it out a month if I know, you know, that's when it's going to go into effect, or I can backdate it, right, if I was a little bit late with this type of change. Choose a change reason, which is being driven by your team is kind of helpful for reporting purposes. But then again, they can simply hit okay, that's going to save it, and that's going to kick off, you know, an email or whatever it might be to get that approval process going, because you probably want someone to look at this before it's finalized in the system. And that's just one example, okay, of a, you know, kind of simple, easy change, the logic of how it works across the system. If you want employees to have some of that access, and then again, the effective dating, which is really important across the board to maintain all of your history. Any questions about that? Is that pretty straightforward for everybody?
We have one question.
I have a question. This is Julie Swift, payroll and HR. So, is there any kind of notification to HR if someone goes in and changes their address?
You just said there was an email.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. There's definitely notifications for that.
Okay, because there's, even if they make-
So, that'll fire?
Even if they make a change in the system, there's other places, you know, PERS and insurance and stuff that have to be changed also.
Yeah, 100%. So, yes, simply there are definitely notifications to make sure that you're fully aware of when these changes are being put into the system.
Thank you.
All right, so let's keep on going. A couple other areas of the self-service, emergency contacts, tax information from their W-4, sorry, one second. Tax information from their federal W-4, and then also, you know, their direct deposit information that they can maintain in here. So, one thing to note, just to quickly point out, when we think about the platform, right, you're obviously going to be hoping for it to be integrated in the best and most effective ways that you all would expect. So, again, later on, Ron will show you inside and onboard in some of the other modules that we have. But onboard is a really, really popular one, right? So, you hire people, and then you give them a really great onboarding experience. And simply think about it as, you know, they're going to fill out a bunch of paperwork in that system, their emergency contact form, their federal W-4 that we provide to you, and then also like a direct deposit form, just as an example. When they complete those forms, all of that data, right, would be moved over to this area so that on an ongoing basis, this is where they can update and maintain it from. But again, there's no initial, you know, manual entry or anything like that on HR or payroll, so I have to set it up. Okay? So, then we have leave tracking, okay? So, when it comes to, hey, I want to take some time off, maybe, you know, I'm taking vacation time, I'm going to be sick for a couple days, I'm not going to be sick, right? We can't really predict it, but just any sort of time off that they want to submit for. So, today, how does that process work at the county? Is that a paper process, or are they submitting emails to their managers and kind of facilitating it through HR? How do you update the balances, you know, when it comes to their plans? Just give me kind of quick, high-level what that looks like today.
So, most of those types of accruals are done at the department level with their supervisors and managers, and then it's just indicated on their timesheet when it comes to payroll, and then manually entered.
Perfect.
So, all of this is done manually, Julie?
Currently, yes.
At this time, okay.
Yeah. The accruals in the payroll system, as far as leave accruals, is done automatically. But as far as requesting time off, it's done with their supervisors.
Yeah, and they're all over the board. Some people fill out a form, some just shoot in email, so...
So, is it real hard to keep track of all of this?
No.
Okay.
Was it, was it, I didn't hear the answer to that one, that's a good question.
She said, she said no.
Pretty well for how-
No, it's pretty simple.
Okay, got it. Got it, okay. Let me just show you just really briefly, you know, how it could be standardized in here. A lot of customers, you know, try to move to having the employees do it through self-service. So, it's really simple and easy. This is going to be my leave planning page. If I was an employee and I had time off for the month of July, you know, I could see those, that time off on my calendar. People often ask, if I'm a manager, or if I'm a department head, can I see a calendar with everybody's time off? Those types of calendars are definitely available. But more importantly, this is where I can actually go and request some time off, okay? So, all of the leave plans that should be available to Mark, right? The employee that we're logged in as, you would be able to see those, what those balances are, and then simply go in and request that time off. So, it's a very straightforward and simple process, it needs to be, because obviously, this is being frequently used by employees and managers. I can choose when my time off's going to be, is it one day, is it two days, is it a week, whatever it might be. I can choose my leave. Again, this is going to be a dynamic list of, you know, leave types that are specific to the employee that's logged in. They're not seeing a global list or anything like that for the county. If I want to take vacation time, let's say that's what I'm doing, just choose that. You can see a little bit of a warning where it's saying, hey, you know, you're going to exceed your bank, you're going to go over the limit. And this is just some of the control that you have on all of your plans. Do we want to allow people to go into the negative? Or do we not want to let them submit the request that they don't have the time available, type of a situation? So, it just helps kind of cut down on some of the back and forth that we sometimes have to do. And then the rest of it is relatively straightforward. But the more important thing to draw your attention to is how the system will start to protect the time off. So, it knows that for Mark's schedule for one day on the 15th that he's requesting to take off, that's worth eight hours from his schedule, okay? Upload any sort of supporting documentation, and then again, save that, and it's typically going to kick off an approval process to the manager, the department head, however, which way you have it set up today, so they can look at it, approve it, deny it, whatever they like. Okay?
Okay.
And then, as you mentioned, the good, the nice segue for this is that these leave requests, right, once approved, it would show up in the employee's timesheet, which effectively is then also going to be pushed out to payroll. So, it's all going to be an automated process from the leave request into the timesheet, and then from there. Any questions about submitting time off through the leave requests? Relatively straightforward, or any questions, let me know.
None.
Yep, perfect. So, from there, we can jump into the timesheet area, right? So, time and attendance is going to be one of the other products within the HRIS module, right? So, it's something that you can definitely utilize if you need to. This is simply going to be where employees can capture their, capture their hours. Maybe it's going to be predefined for them, kind of auto-generated, exception-based timesheets. I can see my totals up at the top of the hours that I'm logging, as well, as well as the leave that's available. But if I scroll down, this is where I can see my actual timesheet, okay? And this is just an example, so it's not that, you know, this is the version of the timesheet that every employee at the county gets, or all of our customers are stuck with this. Just an example, because there's lots of different kind of versions of the timesheet that we can set up in here. But the main takeaway is going to obviously be that we're going to log the time, we're going to update any sort of, you know, leave request into the timesheet for the employee, and then, of course, it's going to be pushed through an approval process when it comes time to, you know, close it out, make sure there's any adjustments that need to be made before it gets sent off to payroll.
So, I have a question.
Really quickly before I explain. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question. Is this like punching in and punching out for the employees? When they come in, they log in, and when they leave, they log out, is that?
That's the next one.
Oh, that's the next one, oh, okay.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, that's definitely one of the options that you can use to capture time, yep.
Okay.
That's a perfect segue. Let me just, let me explain some of those different options that we have. So, like I said before, again, this timesheet can look different for different employees across the county. Let's say, for an example, a salary employee, they don't really need to, you know, clock in, clock out. I'm not saying I know that's the case, but, you know, sometimes that is. So, do they really need to see a start and end time on their timesheet? Maybe not. Maybe they're just working off the value, right, of hours that are worth, that they have for that day. And that's where, you know, for as simple as it gets, it's going to turn into an exception-based timesheet, right? So, a lot of those salary employees, it's usually pretty straightforward. But then you get into the other areas, right? People that need to capture their time, people with a little bit more complexity. So, the different methods of how time can be captured is, one is just like what you said. So, we can set you up with physical time clocks, okay? So, if there's any departments or, you know, positions across the county that you say, you know, yeah, we're, you know, we need a very, very easy way for them to do it, let's put them a clock in their workstation, let them clock in, clock out, and those punches from the physical time clock will come back and update their timesheet for them for when they're clocking in and out.
Mitch?
Yeah, that's one option. Yeah, go ahead.
Do you use scan cards for that now, or is, I mean, we don't use actually time cards anymore. Usually, it's just a little scan cards?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, the time clocks that we use is through a partner vendor that we have, and yes, they are biometric smart clocks, and there are a few different options. So, there's like, you know, fingerprint, like the key fob, the key card, where they can basically, you know, scan it on the clock and then punch out whatever they need to do.
Thank you.
I have another question. Some of our people work in more than one department, more than one area. Does this track that sort of time?
Yeah, great question.
Because we, yeah, we budget in different areas.
Yeah, certainly. So, that's going to be one of the, you know, one of the advantages that we highlight within the timesheets. It's going to be, you know, very common in the public sector. Maybe someone doesn't just work their primary position, right? Maybe they work a secondary position, and what does that mean for us, right? We know it's not very simple. That means that they're probably getting paid for that time from a completely different cost center, right?
Right.
So, that's where this assignment column comes into play, where it defaults to their primary position. That, as I'll show you in a few, you know, probably 10 minutes when I get to the HR side of the system. Managing multiple assignments is a big part of the system. So, if you have an employee, that let's say their primary position is the HR director, but then they had a secondary position of something else, they can toggle between those primary and secondary assignments, capture it in their timesheet, and then again, these 10 hours instead of their primary assignment would be logged towards the secondary assignment. And then that's where, again, I'll show you in a couple of minutes, but, you know, we have all of the general ledger stuff hooked up, the distribution codes for the different departments, so that we can make sure exactly where are we paying these employees from when it comes to different positions in different departments. That's all synced up for you. On the same note, is that somewhat similar, but a little bit different? Another very common use case for our customers, especially in the public sector, is going to say, well, you know, maybe employees have that primary position, and it's not so much that they have a secondary position to log hours to, but maybe there's a project, right, or a list of projects that they can, you know, allocate time towards. So, that's where this cost column comes into play. It really represents cost center for different projects. But again, the employee can represent it with a dynamic list, so pretty much like a specific list to them of different projects that they should be able to allocate time for. So, again, you know, maybe the county puts on an Oktoberfest festival, whatever it might be, and those hours, instead of going to their primary position, should actually be logged to this specific project, cost center, and everything that's affiliated with that. Okay? So, those are a few of the highlights. I mentioned the physical time clocks that people can clock in and out of. There's also the ability for them to, you know, log in with their phone and basically clock in, clock out through a mobile device instead of using like a physical clock on the wall. They can also use their phones, of course, to clock in, clock out, and those punches will all come back to the timesheet. Okay? So, any questions about that, any other use cases? You know, I think I might have saw in the notes, you guys might have used ExecuTime in the past. I could be wrong, but just any, you know, special use cases or any complex scheduling that you feel like you have when it comes to time and attendance?
Well, I mean, like, right now, we're working through some of this COVID stuff. So, you know, there's times that one of the commissioners is spending two or three hours a day running out to take care of something associated with COVID and/or Ms. Schmelzer or other employees. So, I like that cost column because you can break that out, and then when we submit to the state for funding for that, it's a clear breakdown.
Yeah, exactly.
Mitch, this is Julie, I have a question. So, if this, at the end of the week, if this doesn't total 40, it doesn't get approved, right? Do we have to make corrections, or how does that work if we're, if it's not adding up?
Yeah, so your, your team of managers or timekeepers, whoever does the approving, they 100%, they basically have a very similar experience to this, where they're going to see the timesheet that the employee submitted, and then you can make those adjustments as necessary or send it back to the employee, whatever the case might be.
Okay. So, it's still, so it's as if there's the user, which is the employee, and then like a time clock manager, or somebody that is responsible for making sure it either balances or sends it back before it gets entered into the system, right? Okay.
Yes, correct.
All right.
Okay. Um, the only thing to mention here, just so you guys have full transparency with us on time and attendance, is when it comes to complex scheduling in regards to employees or managers needing to use a system to change their shifts, swap shifts, drop shifts, whatever it might be, that is what we currently do not have. So, a good example of that is public safety, okay? The sheriff's department, the fire department, sometimes they're on more complex scheduling. And the system can, and this gets a little bit confusing, let me explain as best as I can. The system can handle a lot of complexity when it comes to the rules with time, but the user interface, right? The employee or manager having to go in, and again, you know, trade shifts, drop them, request, you know, other people kind of take over for them. That's what we currently do not have, but we are revamping that part of our system. But just wanted to make sure we put that on the table for you.
Thank you.
Okay? All right, so we can always come back to this, let me know if you think of any other questions. And the only other things we have here in self-service, let's see really quickly. We've got the clock in and clocking out, their pay history, they can do their paychecks and everything like that. But then we also have benefits. So, you know, a part of the HRIS module that you can choose to use or you don't have to have to purchase it is going to be the benefits. So, it's obviously a huge plus if you do, because it's nice to have it integrated all within the same system. But what do you guys do for benefits today? Open enrollment, new hire enrollment, qualifying life events? Is there a system in place, or is that a manual process?
This is Julie Swift again. Actually, all open enrollment stuff goes through the administrator of the plans, so they handle it, we don't. They notify the employees when it's open enrollment. If they, if they need to make any changes, the employees can come to me for the forms, or they can get the forms directly from the administrator.
Got it, okay. So, that's fine, and you guys want me to give you a quick preview of how it works in here? If you were to want to take advantage of it, or do you want to just skip this for now?
Why don't we pass on that for now?
Okay, yeah, totally fine.
Mitch, could you spend a little-
So, if you are using, go ahead.
Mitch, before you move on, can you spend a little time on the clock in, clock out? I'm curious whether or not that can be done from a desk.
I know it can be done by a phone, from a phone, but I'm curious if it can be done from the desktop? And how it works?
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah, great question. So, you know, this is us kind of looking at it from a laptop desktop view, okay? It would be a quick link that's available, right, within this area. And when they click on it, it's really straightforward. It's got the clock, it's got the time, it's got their two different options. And when I do something like clock in, you'll see some of those areas to adjust. You know, it's definitely still available. And same thing with the physical time clocks, right? They can do these same actions on a physical time clock. If they need to change their position, right, that it's for, or if they need to change that project or cost center to dedicate the time towards, they can do those here as well.
So if they're doing multiple projects a day, they would clock in under one project, clock out, and then clock back in under a different project?
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yep. And it's not to say that they have to do it, just so you know the options, right? Technically, they don't have to all do it, you know, as they're going in and out of those different projects. You know, it is something where they could go into the timesheet the next day or two days later and make all those adjustments and make sure it's all lined up correctly. But yes, effectively, that is how it would work.
Okay.
Okay? Good question. And then if we're doing payroll, which I know that's kind of part of this conversation, but payroll is a part of the system. And if we are doing your payroll services and everything like that, we can produce the W2s and some of the other end-of-year tax forms. And obviously, the W2 is the big one that the employee can just go after themselves instead of having to reach out to anybody or, you know, rely on the physical copy that was mailed to them. And they maybe lost it after a month or two. That always tends to happen. They can just get that all right from self-service. Okay? So lots that they can do, right? But very simple and relatively intuitive. And again, the bigger thing to keep in mind is that you guys have full control over this, right? I'm just kind of showing you all the bells and whistles turned on. But if you were to say, hey, we wanna use it, but we don't like wanna turn all that stuff on right off the bat for them. We wanna kind of, you know, phase into this over the first six months or year, whatever it might be, definitely something that you can do. You guys have all that, have all that kind of in your dismantle of how you wanna decide to roll it out. Any questions on its self-service before I jump over to the HR side of the system?
I think we're good.
Okay. So jumping over to HR, okay? Think of this as, this is really like admin center, okay? This is where you're gonna control all the employee information. If you had to add employees, if you have to change employee information, this is where it's all gonna be done from. And the nice thing about it, when you think about a platform, right? Is simply think that, okay, if I make a change to an employee record here, do I have to go into onboard, perform, and learn all, you know, some of these other modules that you might have and make those changes as well? No, absolutely not. You make those changes here, right? And then all those updates will flow back to the other products that you have with us. Okay, so that's just, again, just kind of general high-level knowledge to understand about this side of the system. So I got a few different things that I'll show you in here. The first thing, just pointing out, is the approval process. So again, a lot of approvals are gonna be used within the system. Every single customer uses some, you know, version of approval, so it's gotta be really solid. It's gotta work well. It's all driven by email notifications. And if you have something to approve, whatever it may be, it's gonna show up here, it's gonna show up right here on your dashboard, so you can go in there and take care of that. So as an example, just really quick proof of concept, I have all my approvals. I can see that this is a leave request for Julie Stewart. I can see the details of the leave request. I can see the balances that she has available. And down below, I can simply approve it or deny it. And then I can also see the next people that are gonna come in the step that, you know, might be looking at this after me. So approvals are straightforward. Again, it's a, you know, very standard part of the system. It's gotta work well because everybody uses it. But what I wanna show you next is gonna be some of the employee and position management. So two really key areas. The system drives a lot of values, value for our customers when they have it fully set up in here. And the first one I wanna look at is position management. Okay? Do you guys do anything for position management today? Any system where, really what position management is, is it's, you know, it's very detailed tracking of all the information on your positions, really from a budget perspective, to make sure that we have that all locked down really tight? Do you guys have a process in place for this? Maybe some spreadsheets where you maintain a lot of different position information? What does that look like?
Not really. I mean, we, we maintain data, but not in spreadsheets the way that you're, that I believe you're referencing.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. And again, a lot of other customers, they're in the exact same boat. So what we try and do here is obviously just streamline it, make it a lot easier, give you a central place to manage it all. But again, the big benefit is it's gonna be integrated with the platform, which is, you know, using, using positions all over the place. How does the information get here? So again, from an implementation perspective, we're gonna load all this information, right? So you guys got tons of employees, lots of positions. We're gonna import all that for you. And for the position management, just really quick, where we start talking about it is this budget grid right here. So at NeoGov, we always wanna make the data really easy for you to work with, kind of give you the most important data right at your fingertips instead of telling you to go run a report or do whatever it might be. So this is kind of one of those areas where I can see all my different departments and whether I'm overfilled from a hiring perspective or if I have room to hire, okay? And all that's gonna be driven off of the position detail, which I'll show you in a second. But before I go there, this is nice because you can drill down into all of it. If you wanted to get a quick look at the Parks and Rec Department and say, okay, you know, where are we at? Why do we have 18 authorized positions, but we have 19 people in the position? Let's drill into that a little bit further and look at all the incumbents of the individuals that are occupying the position. How long have they been there? What are we paying them, right? All those details, again, right at the surface level without you having to do, you know, really any digging whatsoever, just making it easy to work with your data.
So one quick question. While we're looking at these various departments, could we track what those individuals are doing specifically? Like in parks, whether they're visiting parks or what's going on? So we, as a department head, they, they could be able to tell at a glance how their employees are, their time is being utilized?
It's a great question. Not, like, not from this area. I don't think that we have the ability to pull that all in from there. But what do you mean exactly, like, to see what they're doing? Like, like they're visiting a park? Like, how do you log that activity to the day? If so, like, where is that area?
Well.
From a timesheet perspective, you're saying?
Let, let's just say if they had a timesheet for the day, what are their activities for the day? I would think that Parks Department, like if they were dumping garbage or whatever, come up with various activities that have to be done and maybe either check off that they're being done, how much time is it taking, so that we could be more efficient in the way we spend our time.
Mitch, wouldn't that be on the previous screen where they're recording what program or activity they're doing?
Yeah, so that's where it's all captured. But then what I'll follow up for you on and figure out is, you know, what's the best way for the manager or the department had to look at a quick summary of that on like a day-to-day basis so they can see how the employees are spending their time? I'll have to look into that for you and we'll get you some follow-up information.
That was, that was really captured, though, if I could. That was really captured in the, where the employee inputs his timesheets and how many hours he spent each day on, on different breakouts for things. He could capture that on that, correct?
Yes, exactly. It's definitely captured. I just know that, like, in this report, unfortunately, there's not a way to, like, pull that column in to show the breakdown of where they're spending the time. But yes, you're, you're correct. It's, that's where it's logged. And I'll figure out the best way of how the managers can kind of pre-read that information on like a weekly or day-to-day basis.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just thinking.
Great question.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if a department were inefficient in some way, would it be easy for a manager to look at the overall, how are my employees spending their time? What, what do we need to do to make it more efficient? That's, that was my thought.
Yeah, and yeah, it makes perfect sense. Let me, let me, Ron and I will follow up and we'll look into exactly how current customers are having their managers view similar type of information. But it makes, it makes perfect sense what you're asking.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, yeah, no problem. So moving on from this area, right, of the list of incumbents who are currently occupying this position, seeing some of those key details, I can also drill into it, right? I can drill all the way down to a position. This is where you'll really see like the true position management. So if I go into the HR department, I'm gonna go to this HR analyst position, and this is gonna be the position screen, okay? So I'm focused on the HR analyst because that's what I just selected. And if I scroll down, this is gonna be all the details that make up this position. Okay, so there's lots of information. Don't get overwhelmed. Doesn't have to all be used. We can hide some of the fields, just kind of depends on what you wanna use. But all these tabs across the top help make up this position, okay? So a quick little overview. The definition tab is just all like the general information, right? What's the title? What's the code for it? What's the unit, right? This represents unions. So again, that's really, really common. You guys, you guys have unions? If so, how many?
Three.
Yeah, so, got it. So yeah, those will all be associated with the positions, hence the employees, you know, what department, what group are they a part of, their work rule. So all those general details about the position. This tab's also really useful from a budget perspective is the compensation information. So up here at the top left, the authorized versus default FTE count, right? And so this, this is typically a one-to-one relationship for employees in their position. Or you're basically saying, we have eight headcount for this single position, right? Each person we put in it is worth one body. So you can really control that here. And then from a hiring perspective, you can lock it down to say, okay, once we start to approach those limits, do we wanna allow them to keep hiring for it? Do we wanna not, not allow us to exceed those limits? So you can lock it down a little bit more, a little bit further here from a hiring perspective. You got the hours for the position, and then over on the right is the compensation information. So again, there's a, you know, not a wide variety, I guess, but we hear, we hear a variety of how people are typically doing the compensation. Most common ones are gonna be the ranges and scales and steps. Again, very standard for us when it comes to tracking those and moving people through different steps based on their anniversary or whatever it might be experienced in the position. But this is where it's all tracked at this position level.
So Mitch, if we know.
These next? Go ahead.
Mitch, if we know that this employee, we know what scale and step they're at, what wage they're supposed to be at, does it automatically work with the clock to automatically generate or calculate what that person should be paid?
Yeah, definitely. Yep. Good question. Yeah, that'll definitely be there for you. These next two tabs, these are more relevant if you are using payroll through us, okay? So the premiums and distributions. And again, this is just kind of the benefit of having the fully integrated system with everything in here. So the premiums, again, not too complicated, but any sort of additional or special pay that an employee within this position might receive, this is where we can basically default it, right, at the position level. So if I say, for all my HR analysts, it's required that they're bilingual. And since they're bilingual, they get an extra $200 every single paycheck. We can set that here. When I hire someone, they're gonna inherit all these details from the position, and then that's gonna flow through the payroll, right, on every paycheck as needed. And obviously, it can all be adjusted at the employee level if you need to, which is what I'll show you next. Okay? And then the distribution tab, this is where you can see the general ledger, you know, distribution code information coming through a little bit more. So again, it's an area where, I'm not a complete expert on this, but I know that, again, this is an area that's, you know, highly, highly configurable, especially with our public sector customers. That's one of the main benefits of the system when it comes to, you know, not only tracking the fund in the cost center, which is normally like your agency and then the department, but all the way down to a specific account or project or grant. You know, all that's gonna be put together for you during implementation. Okay? And if you were to say, well, for this position, it's not necessarily paid 100% from the same distribution code, it's broken down 50/50 or 60/40 or, you know, 33/33/33. You can split this out, however much you need at the position level or again, at the employee level, once it gets to that. Right? And then these last two are just relatively simple, just kind of budget information. How much total spend do we wanna have on the positions? And also the manager information for who reports to whom. Okay?
All right.
So once we get to a point, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I said, I just, I'm sorry, I said, all right.
Yeah, sorry about that. So once we get to this point, right, of having the positions in here, again, it just helps streamline across the rest of the platform because think about it as an insight, the applicant-tracking product that most, all of our customers have, the most popular product. They're, you're gonna be hiring people in there, and you're gonna hire someone. You're gonna say, we're hiring them as the HR analysts. Once they're hired, all these details from the position that I just ran you through are gonna then be, you know, defaulted to the employee, right? Because they're attached to this position. So from a setup perspective, it also makes it a little bit easier. And then, lastly, just again, take note of the effective dating. So if you were to make updates and changes to positions, you just wanna make sure you know exactly who made that change, when did they make it? Do we need to send it through an approval process, right? That's, you know, that's, again, position management, really doing a good job of, you know, keeping it automated. If it's HR who makes changes and payroll, and you guys can do that whenever you want and it doesn't need to go through an approval process, that's completely fine, right? That's expected sometimes. But maybe if, like, in the future, a department had, right, or the hiring managers who are in control of their positions, they wanna request a new position or they wanna make a change to a position, that's obviously when you can take advantage of the approvals and the effective dating. All right? Any questions on the position management? Or you guys feel okay there?
I think we're good.
All right. So just a couple more things in here and then I'll pass it back over to Ron. I wanna go over just the assignment screen, the employee profile, and just some of the reporting. So the assignment page, okay? This is gonna be an important page when it comes to tracking the employee information. Again, it's a little bit of a busy page, a lot of information, but we can strip some of it down. If I look up Julie, okay, now I'm focused on Julie Stewart, one of my employees within the system. And if I scroll down, this is gonna be a combination of all the information that we have on her that we can track. So the first thing to point out is the multiple assignments. So again, this is typically a pretty good differentiator for us. We don't find that many systems do this or at least do it well, where you're saying their primary assignment is the HR analyst. But if they have a secondary position where they can log some hours as a park ranger or whatever else you have them hired into as a secondary position, again, all the details, right? You can also track those for whatever that additional position is. So a lot easier, obviously, versus doing it manually, trying to track those additional details, especially when it comes to, obviously, managing it in timesheets. So you have that here. And then if I scroll down a little bit more, again, these tabs across the top, right? Those should look familiar to the position that I just showed you, right? Because it is a lot of the same information. This is effectively all of her position information that, again, came from that position when I hired her into the HR analyst. And this simply becomes your area where you say, okay, well, you know, if Julie's a special case and instead of being paid $60,000, we wanna pay her $65,000 because she's great, I can go ahead and make that salary change. A little warning here, telling me that, hey, you're getting out of the range. Do you wanna do that or not? Say that that's okay. And then again, I can go ahead and save that change. So simply it defaults in from the position. And then this is where you can make changes at the employee level if you need to, you know, whenever you need to make those. Okay? And just last benefit here that I'll mention is, again, from a payroll perspective, if you are using payroll with us, one of the big differentiators that we have within here is that is the system handling all of the FLSA retro pays, whatever it might be. So again, the simple logic is if you have time and attendance and payroll, let's say that there was an increase that was supposed to go out to all of our hourly employees, but we forgot, right, we're a week late, we're two weeks late, whatever it might be. I can apply that increase to the employee's wage, basically flag it as a retro pay, save it. And then when you go to rep payroll, the system will do that FLSA true-up for you. It'll calculate the retro pay automatically. It has all those rules built into the system. So not that it happens all the time, but when it does happen, we find that it can be a pretty tedious process. Sometimes there's some very tricky manual calculations that have to be done, but the system handles all those rules for you. Okay? And then you can see the premiums, the distributions at the employee level. So if I need to change this, remove it, give them more, right? If I need to adjust their distribution at the employee level because they're spending some additional time with another department and we wanna make sure they're, you know, paying for some of that employee's salary. Again, you can get very granular at the employee level to set all, to set all that up.
All right.
All right, second to last area. This is gonna be the employee profile, so I'm gonna search for Mark. The reason I show this is because it's just a very nice central area with all of the employees' information, even more than the assignment page. So what we find a lot of times with customers who maybe don't have a system in place, or they don't have a lot of things integrated, one of the biggest things that you're looking for is just a central platform with all the data in the same area, right? Just easy for you to access and look through. So, here's Mark's details, where I can see all the different tabs of information, which I'll come back to. But if I scroll down, I can see all of his compensation information for his position as the HR director. Obviously, you see a very nice breakdown of that salary information, annual, all the way down to hourly. And again, it's just, you know, if you need to look something up quick and easy, it's very simple to get your hands on it, right? And as I scroll back up, we wanted to say, you know, well, what are the, what are the deductions that are coming out of the employee's paycheck? Who are their emergency contacts, we gotta call on these people really quick, something happened. Again, all that key information, just in one central place for you.
Mitch, this, I'm assuming that all of this data is restricted to the manager, or who's ever been given the permissions to look at that?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. That's all a part of the implementation process, is just understanding, you know, who exactly should have access to what? Should the managers be able to see this, if they can't see it, should it be read-only access, should they be able to make a change? All of those permissions are pretty much out of our control.
Okay.
Okay? And then, last thing within here is just the reporting, okay? So, we know as a company across the board, right, we work with thousands of customers across the country, all different levels of the public sector, reporting is critical, right? When you get into these systems, it's almost as, the system's only as good as the reporting that you can get out of it, because as soon as you go a year, two years, three years down the road, and you start realizing, we can't really get our data out that really easily, right? That's just a pain point across the board, I'm sure you can, uh, relate to that. So we have a lot of standard reports, okay? So a lot of times what customers are looking for can be found within these standard reports, which can all be exported to Excel, or CSV, whatever the case might be. Uh, but additionally, aside from these standard reports, we know the customers quickly wanna get into building their own reports, right? Using the ad hoc report builder. So those are what these tabs across the top represent, these five tabs. So, think of this very simply as targeted ad hoc reporting for these areas. So HR data is gonna be a lot of that general census information for the employee. AT is their attendance data, so a lot of their leave balance information. BE is benefits, if you're using our benefits, very easy to report on the data. Payroll, and then timesheets, okay? So the logic is the same across all of them, there's gonna be a gear icon here for you. And again, this is what you guys can use whenever you need to, so as soon, as soon as someone calls on, calls on you for some information, a lot of times we hear that that's just generally a pain point, difficult to get it out of the system that they currently use. Maybe I gotta go through IT to build me a report, a lot of times it's just not very easy. So these are gonna be all of the standard fields for this area, and you can basically say, you know, I need this, I need this. And instead of kind of spinning your wheels and worrying about how are you gonna get this information, is it gonna be up to date when you get it? You'll have to go through it and kind of, you know, vet it out myself. Not that much of a worry, just choose what date you want, hit okay, and the system's gonna provide back to you an up-to-date report with all that information, right? Which again, you can easily export out of the system, you can save it, right? So the next time you come into the system, instead of doing exactly what I just did, even though it takes relatively ten seconds to install, you can just save it and refer back to it later and just keep running it. So that's some of the reporting, it's available across all the different key areas within the system.
Mitch, does it do forecasting for a budget? For example, does it, um, can it generate reports that says, if we pay the employees this percentage raise, it'll be this versus if we give them this percentage raise?
It's a great question, so, yes and no. Um, this system does have a forecasting and costing module that is a part of it, but it is not currently available to our customers, it needs to be worked on, it needs to be enhanced and improved a little bit. But yes, that is generally what it does, and we are going to release it back to our, to our customers. And when we do, you know, if you have the system, it would, it would just be free, it wouldn't be like an additional charge or anything like that. So, not today, but it is a part of the system, it's being worked on and revamped, and it would be available in the future.
Okay.
Okay?
I have a three problem.
All right, so I just wanna be conscious with our time, I know I had about an hour to go through the HRAS elements. There's a lot of other important areas of the system that are really, really great, um, that Ron probably wants to show you, but you guys-
Very interested in the recruiting.
Do I leave anything else that was really important to you for today? Or do you guys wanna see some of the other areas that Ron has to show you?
I, I think we're good for now, I think the recruiting part of it and all of that is probably what we're-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we're good on that part, but we definitely wanna see the recruitment side of it today.
Yeah, I think recruitment side of it's really strong, I'll hand it back to Ron. Thanks everybody for your time, I really appreciate it. If you think of any other questions with regards to what I covered, just make sure you get those questions to Ron, and we'll get those followed along for you, okay?
Thanks Mitch.
Great. Thanks so much Mitch, this is Ron, uh, you guys hang tight, I don't wanna go anywhere, I'm gonna take over the presenter role. And, um, feel free if you want, we can break for two or three minutes, if you want to grab a glass of water, or take a breather. I know there's lots covered.
We'll go ahead and keep going if it's all right.
Perfect, okay. So now, I should be the presenter once again, and, um, you should be seeing that wheel-
Yes.
That we had stopped at previously. So, yeah, one thing that I, um, wanted to mention, uh, I'm sure you guys come to this conclusion, but we are also a cloud-based system, meaning that you don't need to have the, the software physically installed on your devices. Everything is stored on external servers, um, and so as long as you have access to the internet, you can really gain the information, um, from any device that you're utilizing, whether it be a smartphone, a desktop, a laptop. It makes the accessibility for your employees that much simpler and easier. Uh, but definitely from a security perspective, we take the necessary precautions to ensure that your data is encrypted and safe, and not, you know, being utilized by third parties.
All right.
Perfect, so I'm gonna pause right here and actually toggle into the system. So, could we maybe talk a little bit about what you guys are currently doing as it relates to recruitment? Um, you know, onboarding new employees, what do those processes look like right now?
Newspaper advertisements, magazine advertisements.
We'll let Julie address it, we'll let Julie from HR address that.
So we, we post our positions on our website, usually, um, at the employment department. I don't do a lot of newspapers anymore because people aren't reading them. Um, LOC, AOC, which is League of Oregon Cities, Association of Oregon Counties. Um, we used to post with LGPI, who would also post on Indeed for us, which I just posted your job on Indeed today. Um, and as far as onboarding, I meet with employees on their first day, and go over benefits with them, and give them the forms to fill out. And, that's about it.
Okay, perfect. Um, I'm going to guess, so a lot of you have been at the county for, um, a few years now. Have there been any changes that you've noticed, um, with regards to maybe the amount of vacancies that come up, or the amount of applications you're receiving?
We are not getting applications like we used to. Um, we have a lot of, we have a lot of, um, in and out in the sheriff's office. Um, hopefully that'll slow down a little bit, they're close to fully staffed. Um, but there's certain positions that we do go through a lot of employees. Um, and like I said, we don't, we don't, we used to have a clerical, or we, we'd have a road position, and we'd get twenty to twenty-five applications, we're lucky if we get five.
I think the biggest thing, uh, for me, Ron, is, um, I think the quality of, of applicants is diminished as well.
For specific positions, or pretty much all around?
I think pretty much all around. You know, we're a difficult place to get to, the coast, the coast is not some, you know, this area's not a place that's easy to get to, so a lot of people hesitate with that, and, um, anyway, I just, let's go ahead and keep going. I just wanna tell you, that's, that's my, my thoughts on it.
Sure. No, I hear you a lot of clear, I apologize for my generation. I think we've ruined a lot of things. Um, we're, we're all about, uh, convenience, and, uh, unfortunately, the quality does diminish sometimes. I mean, it's all about convenience. But let's talk about, so, we'll go through recruit, we'll break it down to two different perspectives. So, what it would look like from the applicant's point of view, to see the active postings, um, apply and submit their application through the government jobs icon profile, and then what it looks like for HR and the hiring managers and department heads to go through those applicants, communicate with them, and ultimately make those hires. So, the beginning of the process starts in, uh, the part of the system called the NSA. This is where we're gonna be posting our jobs. And really, the goal here is to, pretty quickly, uh, and, um, in real time, summarize what's going on with all of your active recruitment. So, as you're posting new positions to be filled, as you're getting requisitions that are being approved, as you're hiring people into new positions, these numbers all the way up on top here will change in real time. So it reflects what's going on actively right now in the work environment. Um, for starters, is there a requisition process for you internally? So even before you go and add to that position, is there some sort of internal approval that needs to happen? That says, hey, we have, you know, budget for this position, or we need this position built?
No, there's not a formal requisition process.
Well, don't we have to post internally before we advertise publicly?
They, they said that for union positions, you have to post it internally, but as far as a requisition, uh, process saying, hey, I have a vacancy in my office, um, I need to fill it, is there somebody that reviews that entire form? Or is there steps they go through for that? Um, no, the manager just usually gets a hold of HR and says, please run a job ad, I have a vacancy.
Okay, um, so if you were interested in moving that process, uh, to do the system, so that it can each track, very much possible, we, if you'll notice right here, have an open requisition, you can create your own requisition process. If you wanna keep it the way it is right now, keep it out of the system and keep it more casual, um, no problem there either, right? So, really your guys' call, if you want to see what it looks like to create a requisition from like department head's perspective, we can show you that, or we could just go straight into what it looks like to advertise a job.
Uh, why don't you start with the requisition process, so we see it from start to finish?
Okay, perfect. So, I'm gonna toggle over to what we call the online hiring center, that's part of the recruit module. And this is gonna be the area for those individuals and employees that aren't, you know, really involved in the day-to-day, uh, jobs of, of the HR department, but they are somewhat involved in the recruitment process. Maybe a department head, maybe a manager. Within this part of the system, this is where they're gonna see things like active tasks that they need to, uh, complete. So perhaps they have interviews that they need to, um, sign off on, right? Perhaps they have a higher approval wor- workload for a person they wanna sign into the organization. Uh, perhaps they need to approve a requisition, or maybe they themselves would like to create a requisition. So, pretty straightforward, plus icon right here, top right-hand corner, click the requisition. Signify which department you'd like it for, in this case, I'll use HR. We'll upload a database of your different departments, so that's gonna reflect, uh, what you have in real time. The classback is just the job description that's gonna pull from your database of job descriptions. I'm assuming right now, is it a pretty manual database for all of your job descriptions?
Yes.
Yeah, so all of that would be digitally stored, uh, in the system, that you can draw upon, kind of what Mitch was alluding to earlier in the demonstration, when you hire that new person to that position, it's pulling from this database. Um, in this case, I'll use the HR analyst, job description, working title is just how we're gonna call it internally. Uh, let HR know if there's a desire to start date, by when you want that position filled, say August twenty-first. Select who the hiring managers are gonna be, it could be one or multiple people, it really makes no difference. Type of job, is it a full-time, part-time, or seasonal? Are we listing it as an internal promotion, as a regular external, as a transfer? The amount of vacancies, and then any additional comments you want, uh, the HR department to, to be aware of. You just save and continue to the next step. And then this is where you would add what that approval, uh, process is internally. Here's one example, but this can be entirely customized to reflect what your process would be internally, right? So if HR's the only one that needs to be part of the approval or finance, uh, and budget, and HR really only need to be part of that approval group, um, not a problem, not a problem. And then you can select due dates for that approval, for that specific approval. And then finally, any attachments that you wanna provide for the position before you go and save or submit, uh, that requisition. And now, from the perspective of a person that's approving that requisition, you'll be inundated, and you're gonna box right here on your dashboard with what you have to approve, you just click that position. And then you can either approve or deny, provide a reason, and on the right-hand side, you'll see that, uh, approval timeline, and we'll know exactly where in the process that position is. Any questions, look how that would work?
No, sir.
All right, perfect. Yeah, Julie, is that what you had in mind, moving the requisition process from a more of a casual to something that's actually stored and tracked in the system?
I'm not sure which Julie you're referring to, but I, I do think it would be better to have that electronic that we could track things. Um, the other thing is, you know, I always worry, um, Julie in HR, she handles a lot, and, you know, the chance of something getting overlooked or forgotten, I wouldn't want somebody to say, well, why didn't you run the ad for this? Or why didn't you do that? At least this way, it falls on the manager to start that process, to put in that requisition, and then it can easily be tracked from there.
Perfect, okay, great, thanks for listening back. Now, assuming we've gotten that requisition approved, right, you get updated right here, and then you can go and actually post that position, either directly from the requisition, so that everything auto-populates, or you can create a brand new position, just click the plus icon here, click the job posting, and then following a pretty similar, uh, set of steps. So, I have which department is the position for, um, what job description are we gonna be using from our, our database? Type of position, how long we want it to remain open for? Perhaps the attached categories that position is for, and then by, uh, linking it to that specific job description, you'll notice that the information will automatically be populated into the different fields, like the job description, example duties, qualifications, things like that. And then you'll see also the salary information for that position, but if, if it's a position that's been updated, uh, you can always change that information, so that the employee's safety goes up to date. And then you would click save, and then that position would now be advertised on your website, and we'll go ahead and take a look at it from the applicant's point of view. So, once we posted that position as an organization, I'm actually gonna go to your guys' website to give you an idea of what it would look like. Okay. Now, if I were to apply for a job, I'm guessing I click right here under the employment tab, right?
Yep.
And are these your current vacancies right here?
Yes.
So the way that it would work, when the incoming applicant clicks under employment, instead, they'd be redirected to this five oh eight C ADA compliant career page, that's hosted by Nioko. Um, from a branding perspective, you can absolutely change what the background looks like, what the messaging is, but this is where we're gonna have to show all of your current act- active vacancies. So, as the applicant, this is where I can go onto your website and see what you currently have available. Click here for additional detail, right? See things like the job description, the salary information. That was all pulled from the backend that I just showed you as the corrector, how I would be able to activate that. And so, if everything looks good, right, I see a couple questions I'm gonna have to answer as an applicant, all I have to do is click apply. And I'm gonna log in right here as the applicant, through my government jobs icon profile. I'm gonna log in as Mary Andersons. And you'll notice that a lot of the requirements for that position are already automatically filled out, because I've already created government jobs on profile. So, the benefit of utilizing a system like this is, it alleviates a lot of the legwork that the applicant has to do, imagine it, they had to apply to twenty or thirty different organizations where they, every single time had to re-enter that information and that. This simplifies it. But you'll notice for these different sections, the system will automatically checkmark or flag certain things that are missing. So in order to ensure that, um, you on the side of HR are not receiving incomplete applications, the system can flag any required, uh, metrics, like questions that were left unanswered, attachments that were not provided, and prevent the applicant from submitting their information until everything is checked. So it's a benefit for both the applicant, it's much faster process and more efficient, but also reassuring for HR that they're only receiving completed applications.
Okay, I have one question. Uh, once you get all these qualifications and so forth for the, um, applicants, where are these sent so that people can apply for the job? where are these sent so that people can apply for the job, just on our website or where else?
So the, the way that they access it, this is the applicant creates a governmentjobs.com profile. And a- as mentioned, when they go in to your website and they see those vacancies, anything that they want to apply for that's what's gonna allow for them to submit that information. To have those vacancies appear on your website, i- it's going to be that process that I should just show if you wanted to add a new position. And here's an example of some of those positions currently happening.
Ron, I think-
I'm showing you two perspectives. I'm showing you HR's perspective, how they advertise the position and collect those applications. And then I'm also showing you the perspective of the applicant to actually go in and submit their information to the agency.
Okay, what I'm asking is, okay, I'm a person looking for a job. Is the only place, just go to NeoGov and that's it, or where else?
No, it wouldn't even be NeoGov. NeoGov is what powers it, but they're still going to your website and they're still clicking that employment application as part of the website.
Ron, we had, you and I had talked about, um, the fact that you can advertise it in different areas for us. So the question is, in addition to our website, where else does that job ad appear, or where can it appear?
Perfect, okay, great question. So, yes, we automatically will push it out to the governmentjobs.com job board as well. So that is a standalone job board that's utilized by, at this point, over thirty-nine million applicants worldwide. It's the number one public sector job board in the US for, uh, local government. And then for each specific position, if you'd like, you have the ability to push the jobs to things like Indeed.com, CitrueRecruiter, um, Monster. And that's totally dependent on whether or not you feel like getting enough applicants or not. That does come with an additional cost per job. Um, but it's anywhere from fifty to a hundred, I think, I'm sure.
And then can we add, can we add the places that we want it advertised on top of that? For example, in Oregon, we do want it advertised in the League of Oregon Cities or the Association of Oregon Counties. Can we have that added so it auto- automatically bumps out there too?
So if, for some of those areas, it will not automatically be advertised, but what you can do is you can keep track, you have a phone exam plan, uh, where you're recruiting those positions out to through recruitment plan. Uh, you can keep track of the spend and then you can run a report in terms of how many applicants you receive from those different, uh, areas. To automatically push out those jobs, it's gonna be those areas that we integrate. So your Indeed, your LinkedIn, your Monsters.
Okay.
All right.
Is that clear?
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions?
I think that's clear.
Perfect, okay. All righty. Um, from the perspective of the applicant, assuming I submitted my, my audition-
Hi, sorry.
We're gonna fast forward.
Can I ask a question?
See their perspective.
Excuse me?
Yeah, sure.
So you mentioned that you would push out the, um, applications or the advertisements to Indeed and Monster and what have you. And if we were just looking at the recruitment section of, you know, your services, couldn't we push out our own recruitments to Monster and Indeed? I mean, what, what's the benefit of going through you guys and, and whatnot?
So the benefit is that, A, from a cost perspective, we've negotiated costs of the advertising that you're getting is gonna be prioritized placement. So typically, if you're utilizing Indeed, usually through the free version, um, you're just kind of lumped into, uh, a gigantic, you know, well of different applications. We're placing you on the top as much like if you do a Google, uh, search, you have your, you know, top paid ads on the beginning of the first click. Secondly, not only have we negotiated enterprise pricing for you, uh, when it comes to importing that information and data, we have an analytics component of the recruit module that's gonna summarize all that information automatically for you if you're not utilizing it. And you're, um, going outside of the system to repost those jobs, you're gonna have to then create and curate your own analytics and your own reports. Versus having the system automatically give you and collect it.
Okay, thank you.
I would think from a times perspective, it would be easier to just-
Exactly, yeah. Thirdly, from the applicant's perspective, it adds an, an extra unnecessary step. Instead of automatically being redirected and submitting their information through Indeed, that gets pushed into governmentjobs.com. They have to be redirected from Indeed to your website to governmentjobs.com, and that's-
So another question, could we just advertise our jobs on governments dot jobs? Or do we have to go through you?
So you can have, you can have, so, I mean, we, we own governmentjobs.com. You can absolutely just use governmentjobs.com as an advertising tool. But you're not gonna have the online app, application cake door, right? So it's gonna be pretty similar to how you're utilizing the script. It's a way to get visibility, but you're not gonna be getting all the additional benefits of having your employees be able to submit electronically both through all of those applicants, sort through their resumes, have those electronic offer letters, make those hires in the system.
All right.
Okay, I had a question and you may have just answered it. You said that you verify the applications are complete, but do you check them to make sure that they're qualified?
Yes, absolutely. So we are not hiring anyone for you. What we're simply doing is that, hey, these applicants have met the minimum qualifications to just be able to submit their application to. Once they've submitted, then it's gonna be on HR's, uh, in, in HR's best interest to go through those applications and review them to ensure that everything's with, uh, everything that was provided does qualify the person for the application for the position.
Have sort of a follow-up question on that screening element then. Um, sometimes we have minimum qualifications and then, you know, a lot of employers say, or other equivalent experience. You know, where, where would you guys fall on, you know, when you're pre-screening these things? If they don't meet the minimum, how do you, how do you do that? How does that work?
Great question. So through our system, you have the ability to score these applicants. And that is determined based on the types of questions that you're doing during that screening and submission process. And so when they go into their profile and submit an application, they might have a couple of questions that you've created. Based on their answer, you can have the system automatically score. So a good example would be a minimum requirement for, uh, educational level, right? Perhaps you need at the bare minimum a bachelor's. But you do allow for the applicant to still submit even if they have an associate's. The system can then automatically recognize that the candidate said that they only have an associate's degree and then automatically unqualify them for the, uh, job opportunity, but they still have the ability to apply.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all of our questions.
Okay, perfect. Um, what I wanted to talk about was the ease of communication with the applicant. So back to their perspective, once they've submitted that information, they get access to the web con applicant dashboard where they can see all the positions that they applied to, just directly, right? When they apply, which organization is for, and the live status of that application. So instead of having to have constant communication back and forth and phone calls and, you know, that man came to receive my application or not, they can just simply go to this dashboard and in real time, they'll know exactly where they are in the process. Similarly, if you want to also be able to allow them to do things like self-scheduling for an interview, our system gives them that capability. All the HR staff has to do is figure out a couple of blocks and times that work for all the hiring managers. And when the, uh, applicant comes in and self-schedules and confirms that appointment, everyone's calendars automatically get updated along with the location and time. Also, if a new applicant comes in for a similar interview, that time will not be allowed if it's been ordered. So you're not gonna have to work out double booking with multiple people. Uh, and then thirdly, you have the ability to also sign off on electronic offer letters through the system. So as we're now working in more of a, a remote, in a, in a world, and, um, we're trying to limit the paper that's handled and simplify the communication and routing between departments, this is gonna allow for, uh, a lot of great electronic signatures, attachments, and the free provider and all of it is scored directly tied to that applicant and that new interview.
All right.
And then the messaging obviously would be unique to your organization. Here's just one example of what an offer letter might look like.
Ron, does the system also generate, um, rejection letters?
Yes, so absolutely. You can utilize, um, various email templates that you'd be able to create in the system to automatically send those out to those candidates that, uh, are no longer continuing in the process because they didn't meet minimum qualifications or didn't conduct an interview really well, just things like that.
All right.
Can I just ask a couple of overall questions? How successful is your recruitment process? Do you have any metrics to say you're so much better than just doing it the regular way or?
Yeah, so in terms of applicant quality, typically, once an organization starts utilizing NeoGov, and really any form of technology, but specifically the public sector, once they start utilizing NeoGov, we see an uptick, depending on your geographic area, on average, anywhere from two to three times.
Okay.
Right, because we're modernizing the process to make that much easier. And additionally, you're utilizing the governmentjobs.com database and toolset, which is so widely utilized throughout Oregon, and Washington, and California, all of these states.
How many counties? How many counties in Oregon are using this system?
I can look that up right after you, just a couple of seconds. Okay, wanna read these out loud, so?
No, just give me how many, that's okay.
Roughly how many?
I'm seeing at least, at least fifteen, if not twenty, counties that work with this. Not to mention all the cities and special divisions.
Okay.
Are they mostly large counties?
No, um, most of our customer base spans anywhere from thirty to five hundred full-time employees.
Okay.
All right.
Just think that's all.
And you're sending us a, you're sending us a fee schedule with all this?
I'm so sorry?
Are you going to be sending us a fee schedule? What are your, you know, what are the costs of this, the county?
Oh, uh, sure, i- for the system?
Yes.
Yeah, i- it just ultimately comes down to, as mentioned, what portion of the platform you want to be able to access. You want to use the full platform or are you only interested in recruit module? Um, it, it comes down to that. And the more of the full platform that you're utilizing, the, the better and more cost effective it is from a fundraise perspective. But the overall cost is gonna be more expensive obviously when you're utilizing the full platform.
Okay, have you given that, that, that fee schedule to Director Schmelzer yet, or are you still, we're waiting on that?
So, yes, Director Schmelzer and I, we've discussed it briefly, but we wanted to have this conversation initially to get a better idea of where the county is in terms of the needs. And then we're gonna, again, go back to the drawing table to kind of talk about the musts, needs, and the, the nice, perhaps, portions of the system.
So another question, do you give discounts if, uh, there are fewer employees? Well, gotta ask. All we can do is say no.
Yeah, so it's, it's not so much discounting. The, like I mentioned, the more of the system that you're purchasing, it's a bundle price, so there already are discounts applied into the system. What we have been doing to deal with a lot of the impacts of COVID is if you're willing to do a multi-year commitment, we can definitely, uh, in years one and two, um, discount significantly to make it more affordable. And also during that implementation period, make sure that you have the resources that you need. And it, it's not so much of a, a budgetary issue for the county. Um, and then another variant is a lot of counties and cities are starting to submit for CARES Act relief and CARES Act funding. And, um, proposing NeoGov as the way to secure the, that funding because our systems do allow for remote work, right, accessibility, uh, safer working environments and that.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Yeah, what I would suggest, because, um, we're, we have so many people on the call and, and we're, right, your day-to-days don't really involve going through HR processes all too much. I'll go back to the PowerPoint, um, just to keep it pretty simple. Okay, so as I mentioned, right, we, we talked about kind of the, the main components which took us to manage. I was completing the recruit, uh, section of it. Are there other areas that you definitely want to see, or would you guys like to conclude the conversation?
I think we'd like to talk about it some privately and then Ms. Schmelzer can get back to you on it.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Two hours is a lot.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, we've been able to kind of explain the, the gist of the systems and some of the capabilities that would allow you to, to, uh, improve upon and, and, and to convert to more digitized process. But feel free to fire away with any additional questions you have. Definitely pricing related, I'll work on that with you also.
Thank you, Ron. We appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, yes. I'm very much excited.
Disconnect this. Let's just hang up. Hang up. Oh, that's right. I can do that. Yep, I got it.
I think it's gonna be really important to see, um, how much of this could be charged out to COVID.
Well, one, one thing I had talked to Ron about is with OpenGov, there is a certain payroll function in there. Andrew and I have talked about that as well, where we really wanna see what that has. We don't want it to repeat.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
We don't wanna pay for something that means that you're committed to somewhere else. So we needed some more information on the open, the payroll part with OpenGov, which I don't think we're starting or never will be yet on that one. Um, you know, he, Ron made Charlie a, a quote last year and it was, it was pretty low, it was pretty high pressure. They wanted us to quick sign, um, and I don't think that it's, I don't think it included all of that. So, you know, I think we just need to see what we're in with the OpenGov platform that we're working in right now and then see how that compares to this and then, you know, open their prices. Certainly see if we can include any of the, the, but, um, so far with COVID, at least with ours, with CARES Act, it's a reimbursement program.
Mm-huh.
Um, so I guess you could probably say you're buying it, um, you know, to reduce interact, face-to-face interactions and all that. But you may not have been given COVID reimbursement, but it's somewhere that, um-
Right, and question, are all those modules included in this handout you gave us?
Um, I, I believe that, so I keep them wrong. So I, and I asked him to send the information, so that should all be in there.
Okay, good enough.
We have one public comment, Mr. Barnes?
Yeah, I'll be really brief. This would be the fourth software program that you've bought this year, if you get this. You bought one for tax assessment, you bought OpenGov, you just bought the dog catcher, a, uh, software program. This would be number four. Um, but I think, Chris, you really nailed it on the head. Our biggest problem with recruitment is our location. You know, we don't have good schools here. We're three hundred miles from a culture center and nightlife. It, it's a hard draw getting people to come to Cary County. And, you know, for the, I'm listening to this, it sounds great, but all the, you know, if we just got OpenGov, that's gonna be taking care of our payroll and our, and a lot of this stuff. And I just, you know, I really question the, the, you know, spending this kind of money for just a recruitment program when we have a lot of other issues as well.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, we're, you know, we're, we're not necessarily looking to buy any of this right now. I like the recruitment part of it, but that's just one part of it. And if we could just do the recruitment part for a small fee.
Mm-huh.
I mean, we've seen three finance directors in four years, so, you know, those kind of things. If we can get a qualified person, because we get twenty applicants versus one that just kind of really wants to go down the road, but they'll stay here for another year or two, it, it makes it worth it.
It's, you know, it's not just you though, if you think about it. I've been through five primary care physicians since I've been here. Four of them have moved away. You know, how many people have gone through the sheriff's department? Other jobs that people come here, they make it halfway through the winter and say, I can't deal with this anymore, you know? We have our own issues that, you know, it's, you know, plus what you mentioned about the quality of recruits going down. It's, you know, I, we spent a lot of money for Proffman last year, two years ago, to find a somebody. They came up with twenty-three candidates and only two of them were qualified at the end of the day. The one that we had lasted six months, so, you know, thank you.
Thank you. And just to clarify one point, um, two of those software programs we got were grant-funded. Not, not rental funds, so, to be clear to the public. All right, um, anyone else have anything they'd like to discuss? HR, anyone, and we're good? Alright, um anyone else have anything they'd like to discuss, HR, anyone, and we're good? Yes?
Terry, AP clerk, finance department. So I just had a question, um because I am familiar with um the government jobs, not so much with NeoGo- NeoGov. Um but prior to working here, so I know that it has the ability, for instance, like if you work with the state and maybe they'd have to give you a presentation on this, but when you post a job, you can do certain filters on it for qualifications and experience, which I know we didn't get a demonstration today. But as well for applicants applying around the state, I know one thing that is really nice with it is, so, let's say if you're hiring for a business manager, that person would be going on to government jobs to look for a business manager position and they can look where they wanna lurk, look, work with the state, with certain counties. You can pull in all those filters, you can narrow it down to administration or different areas. So you can look, do I wanna just look at Lane County? Do I wanna look at everywhere in the state and see who has an open position for this or that? So that would just be maybe a nice demonstration to see with this as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further? This meeting's adjourned.